All right, good evening. We will call to order the county council. Medium September 12, 2022. A real call, please.
Here.
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 President.
President.
Here. Pete, would you mind leading us in prayer?
Everyone will take a moment to pray. Dear God, our heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have this evening to be together as a council. And we pray for that presence at this meeting that 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 will give us guidance in our decisions. And we pray that those who have presentations and proposals that that they are listened to and were able to look to thee for guidance and wisdom. We pray for these things in Jesus' name.
Amen. Would please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all. Next is approval of tonight's agenda. Motion to approve. Second, the motion by John T., a second by John Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Motion passes. Next up is public comments. If anyone in the audience or online would like to address the council on a topic on tonight's agenda or any other topic, now's the time. No one online? We'll close the public comments. Next up is the approval of ordinance 22 or 2022-07. First reading, it's an ordinance of the Johnson County Council authorized the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to acquire and install certain equipment, complete certain projects, and make certain improvements and renovations, and to pay the cost of issuance of the bonds. Commissioner Barrett online?
Yes, he is.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Hello.
Yeah, if you all have any questions about the GOB, just please ask me and hopefully I can answer those for you.
Commissioner Barrett, we received at the bottom of the bond general statement of what the projects are. Could you elaborate a little bit more on what those are?
And what you have line item by line item on that Johnson County Fairgrounds, that'll be paving. Johnson County Park, that'll be some paving, probably some finishing of Dunn Arena to to help set it up for events out at the Horse Park. Highway equipment, I can't tell you exactly what piece of equipment that will be for, but that is specifically for highway equipment of some kind. Maintenance equipment, of course, is anything that we would have coming up in equipment. Training center expansion, that is for a simulation building that will be added on to the training center along with separating the training room from the rest of the the building, so you're not walking into the training room and interrupting training. While we're having it, we just something we kind of overlooked. I guess really not knowing that the use of the training center was going to be so heavily involved in other things other than police training. So there'll be a hallway expanded into that and the entry will be moved so that we're not walking into the middle of the classes that are going on there. Fuel tank removal, that's the tank removal out at the highway department for going to getting rid of those tanks to go to the cards. Courthouse renovation, that is sidewalks. Were we doing all the sidewalks, the fountain? Just kind of maybe fixing that up a little bit so we get rid of the tripping points and things that we have around the courthouse. That's redoing the steps because they're falling apart, things like that. Record storage building, that will be for all the records that we have to store that all departments that have to store records that will be built out at the fairgrounds in the southwest corner of the fairgrounds. Along with now, and we'll have to figure this out as we go, we have to build an election storage area. The secure election tempered storage area for the the election machines because they've gotten bigger by twice the size. And where we have them stored now will not be enough room to do that. So we'll be adding that on to the record storage building so that that's all out at one place. Of course, information technology is just for miscellaneous equipment, office furniture same way. And then, of course, miscellaneous is just for those things that come up down the road that that we didn't plan for. Small items such as maintenance items on buildings. And then, of course, your cost to your bonds.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Further discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-07.
Second, the motion by Ron, a second by John Ed. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. First reading.
Council members, please, if I could just for a second, if there's any questions over the last agenda item, the American Rescue Plan, as far as Johnson County Fiber Professional Services, if if I could answer those questions while I'm on here because I am going to have to get off here in a few minutes. I know that's last gen item, but unless you have questions, it really doesn't matter.
Only question I have is the 750 for mental health. That's for the initial design.
That's not on for tonight.
That's not on the agenda tonight.
He's talking about item seven, D7.
The million dollars for Johnson County Fiber and the 20,000 professional professional services, which is the council that we were hiring to help us with the ARPA funds.
And why I thought it was on tonight.
And those of us that are on the ARPA committee, we could talk about that at that time if you'd want to. Ron, you're one of those.
No, I I'm sorry. I thought 750 was on for the night. My bad.
I have no questions.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the routine matters. These are roads that consent agenda, the routine matters that we approved by a single motion. Unless a council member wishes to have one of the items pulled for further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve routine matters consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by John T., a second by John Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Except salary ordinance amendments, additional appropriations, reductions, and transfers. First up is the animal shelter.
Good evening. Carrie Clutchy, Director of Johnson County Animal Shelter and Animal Control. Any questions?
So you're asking for an additional appropriation for these or what?
Yes, additional appropriation.
Do, I'm sorry.
So you're asking for an additional 54,000 for?
The part-time to get us through the rest of this year, yes.
And then 11,000 for apparel?
Yes, it's. I'm gonna actually let him answer those questions.
Mike Clark, Deputy Director. The uniforms that the current officers wear, they are wearing a hodgepodge of uniforms. It's not professional at all. Their ballistic vests are five years plus outdated. I have officers wearing blue jeans, some are wearing green pants, some are wearing black, some are wearing green. You have two officers on a scene at the same time. They don't look like they're from the same department. So we're trying to upgrade the officers and make them be more professional. We're interacting with a lot of different agencies on the state level, county and local.
And it takes 11,000 to do that?
They're having to be uniformed from all the way from pants, shirts, vest carriers, ballistic vests, everything. We're look, we're using the same company that the Sheriff's Department uses, Nelson Uniform Company. So the quality will be there, but we're having to start from scratch.
Do they get clothing allowance?
No.
I've got a question. This is something I've been meaning to ask for a while. Couple of questions, and I hope you don't take offense to it, but why do animal patrol officers need ballistic vests? Please.
Um, I don't know the year, but I know it started probably five or six years ago because there were at least two animal control officers that were shot on duty and died. A lot of times the officers will send us out, we go out for. Recently, there was a SWAT team. We had to go out because there were dogs. Sometimes the officers, police can't get into the building because of the dogs. So the officers are at risk. I can tell you they get threatened on a daily basis.
Okay, well, I don't doubt that. And the second is on the firearms. Where do they get their? Are they just carrying under? Under the concealed carry or permit or?
I have removed all firearms from the animal control officers.
Okay.
We took those away.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the information.
Yes.
And I can tell you that with that 11,000, one of our officers, we're down now down to three officers. So it might be a case where we don't use all of that money this year because we're not fully stocked with officers. But if we could have that carryover for when we do get people in, we're down 50%. We only have three of our six positions filled right now. So if we can get enough to get them, and then if we have to come back to get the rest, but we'd like to have that available as we train, when they get through training to have a uniform made for them.
So they got their uniforms when they came on, they just got hand-me-downs or?
They've been wearing black t-shirts and jeans with hand-me-down vests that are at least five years old. I think they're older than that. Expired, five years expired.
And I'm sorry, how many do you have to outfit?
A total of six, but we only have three that are actually employed right now. We're still trying to hire.
Ballistic vests are upwards of $800 apiece.
So I did put the estimates in there and that included the vest, right? And I think it was around $800 a person for the full uniform.
I don't have a problem with this request.
So your part-time requested, right now the positions aren't filled, but you're trying to fill them?
The part-time is full.
Okay.
That's the animal control officers, their uniforms, those were down 50%. We only have three of six officers.
And you're trying to fill?
Yes.
May I ask what means you're using to fill those? What is the county's website and?
It's on the county website. We've been posting on like Facebook, different social media. We've also used a certain someone's indeed personal page to post it. We are getting applica- applications constantly. However, no one's showing, I think we've had five, no call.
No call, no show, scanner.
Yeah. So I mean, people are applying, they're just not coming to their scheduled interviews.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Second paragraph, at this time the shelter is caring for 53 dogs, 111 cats, four guinea pigs, 22 rabbits, and three snakes. Um.
Those numbers are down.
Okay, so how long do you keep an animal before? I know you have different rescues, et cetera. How long, can you explain cats, dogs, guinea pigs, rabbits? How long do you normally keep those before? Someone takes them or you get rid of them one way or another?
So last year our average, I think, was seven days that an animal stayed in our care. So far, the last time I looked, and it's been probably a month or two, our average stay has been 21 days. We're not the only shelter in crisis, though. It's kind of a national issue. All of my rescues are full. We hold them as long as we can because the only alternative is euthanasia.
Um, and what's the longest, is there a limit to how long you keep an animal if you can't?
As long as they mentally and physically are handling the facility, we'll keep them. But sometimes they start to their behavior changes and they start to get aggressive. And once that happens, we have to, that's more with dogs. Cats can handle it a lot longer, guinea pigs and rabbits, they they could probably chill for quite a while. But once they really start to mentally struggle, that's when we have to make the decision to let them go.
And when you say that?
That's euthanasia.
Okay.
We'll post them as urgent on different pages, trying to get rescued to understand that if they don't pull, that they'll have to be euthanized. And that used to work about 75 plus percent of the time, and now it's a 50/50. No one has space.
Your request for additional 54,000 on overtime, what was your total budget this year?
I don't have.
Part-time, you mean? Our total budget was 115.
I'm sorry, part-time, yeah. Total budget was 115?
Yes.
We raised it to 170 in first reading.
The firearms, what happened to the firearms? Were they the counties?
Nope, they were their personal firearms that they were wearing. So we told them that we, yeah.
Just curious what personal defense did they have?
Right now they have the OC Jogaons that they carry at the times.
I ask you to respond to this. There have been times that I've been told that that you folks at the animal shelter will take away business from wildlife removers. Can you comment on that?
I would love to. So we always refer people, and this is the perfect week for you to bring that up. And we had Friday, I think it was, we had a family call us, they had a raccoon on their roof. We gave them all of the wildlife, no one would go get it. So we went out there, it took us three hours out in the heat, finally got the raccoon to come off the roof and it ran off and it was fine. We would love for wildlife people to take that business, but the problem is, is that families, they're calling the police out to put the animal down because they think it's sick. So what we're doing is if it becomes between the police having to shoot the animal and us coming and removing it from the property, we do that and then we re-release it. But any wildlife person that wants to give us their contact, we would love to send wildlife to them and not have to do it.
So you release animals?
We release. We do if it's healthy, there's no sign of injury or, you know, distemper, that kind of thing. If there is, we put that animal down.
And you release it with the same guidelines as one of the companies?
Yep, and we release it, we've gotten permission from DNR to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions?
Could they bill for that? Since it's a wildlife, not in their scope?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Can you do?
Can you, could you bill for that since it's wildlife, it's not in your scope?
Adam, could we go for that?
Could look into it.
I mean.
Yeah, it's not in our ordinances as far as fees though, so I don't know, but we can have.
Again, I'll look into it.
I mean.
I think it's a good idea. We're wasting resources.
We're wasting resources and I mean, if it's wildlife.
Yeah.
Why are we going out on it?
Well, and one of the things to keep in mind, a lot of the wildlife that we go on has distemper. So it's a public safety and population safety for animals. It's easier and safer for us just to go trap it, put it down and be done with it. But I wish it was something our officers didn't have to go on.
DNR?
DNR has basically said, please, please do this for us. We don't have the resources and they will turn people away. They just don't have the resources. I don't have the exact number of wild animals that we've gone out. It's not something that we really strive to do. But by not doing it, you end up having the police department having to shoot an animal in someone's backyard because animal control has said no.
I mean, if it's not sick or anything, I mean, why would they have to shoot it? If it's stuck on their roof, there's.
Well, this one was, definitely had some issues. I got stuck up there. We think it went up the drain spout and got stuck and it was dehydrating and it was not in good shape, but it finally got down. But a lot of times we've gone out on something that a police officer said, I'll just shoot it. And I said, no, let's go out and get it. And it's been a healthy baby. They just, they're not, they don't know. They see a baby that's not with its mom and think it's sick and needs to be shot, and it doesn't.
I think we owe to the taxpayers to charge for that.
I mean, that.
Well.
How many times you go out a year on something like that?
I don't have the numbers, but I could get them. I mean, it's not, it's a couple of times a week, maybe. I feel like this year than more than in the past, but it's not a majority of our runs by any means.
I mean, if they can't get a private company to do it.
Yeah, we tell them, here's phone numbers, call, call, and then they call us back. The one from Friday called 911 like three times. So finally I got on the phone with her and I said, I'll just come assess, and we ended up getting it down, but it wasn't cooperating.
You know, three hours. It's not in your scope.
Yeah.
Which is different than, I'll give you an example. The day that I went out for my orientation with them, I indicated that I had had a raccoon that was getting into my attic, and they gave me the numbers of wildlife control. And it's different than if that raccoon was running around from neighbor to neighbors and was falling over, acting like it was dead or whatever and just ill. And they referred me to a wildlife control specialist, so they don't get up into people's attics trying to set traps.
Yeah, we don't go underneath the houses, up in the attics or on the roof. That was the problem with this raccoon is we were not going to climb on her roof, no matter how much she wanted us to.
Right, but wildlife control does do that for a fee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just don't think we should be doing it.
Makes sense.
I mean, it would cut your work down if you're going up two or three times a week.
I mean, at certain times of the year, it's going to be busier.
Right.
Coming the next few months, it should be pretty rare, but in the spring, we get a lot of wildlife calls.
If it's not one call, two hours or an hour, that's, it ends up.
Yes, it does.
You guys can also prioritize the rush you're coming.
We do.
As well.
Yeah. That was kind of a slow day, so we were out there. And but if that call would have come in, we would have had to leave to deal with that call.
Okay.
Ready for a motion?
I am.
I make a motion to approve animal shelter number 4008. I need to read the old account number.
You should reference the 4008. I think you say D1, A, B, and C, correct? I did not.
I didn't.
You can just reference D1, A, B, and C together.
Okay. All right, D1, A, B, and C for approval. Okay, I must my run. Yes.
Waiting for a second.
Is this?
Sir.
This is included in your budget for next year, correct?
Yes, um, the and the wearing apparel is not because I kind of missed that. The vehicle maintenance is and the part-time is. But the wearing apparel, one of the things is it's something that they, obviously they're not going to get new outfits every year. So that's why even if we get this, if we can hold it as people into the next year get hired, then we can just use for the same fund. So we don't have to come back and say, we have a new person, can we?
So based on the the part-time being partially offset by the unfilled positions that are full right now, correct?
No, um, basically the unfilled position, that money, we've been moving it into overtime because we've had so much overtime with officers trying to cover for the people that aren't there. So that's why I didn't use that to cover overtime or part-time because I need it for overtime for the staff that we do that. Yes, that is what we've had for years and it is for shelter staff clothing budget. It's not animal, I mean, we like, for instance, if an animal control officer is on call and they get a call at 3:00 a.m., they'll get up and put on their black t-shirt. So that would be purchased out of that, but it's not their uniforms. That money is used for the staff in the building that is our cleaning, dogs, taking care of animals, that kind of stuff. Okay, so we would have to come back next year. Okay. I'll get touch with you. You can explain that to me better. Thank you.
Right, looking at this from my my perspective, I've been out to view the facility. I understand the need. So I'm gonna with a caveat that this board is more concerned with human facilities at this point in time. We have some grand deficiencies that we're working towards, but I will second the motion.
Okay, a second by Ron or a motion by Ron, a second by John T. All those in favor? I opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Circuit Court.
Sheena Johnson, Court Administrator.
Amy Reeser, Johnson Circuit Court.
What questions do you have for us?
These were answered in first reading pretty well.
Yeah, you'd asked about what comes out of indigent legal back at first reading. And we just don't have enough to cover this year.
Sure.
Motion to per Circuit Court, 1001, 131 indigent legal.
Second, motion by John T., a second by John Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Crisis Coag School Grant. 31 online to present this.
No.
Table. But I did. So we are on item three auditor.
I'll move to approve that's presented.
Second. Second. Third motion by John Ed, a second by Ron. All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Motion passes. Now, Crisis Coag School Grant.
Yay.
Hi, Betsy Swerengen, Director of the Health Department. I'm just here to ask for an appropriation out of that grant money for part-time FICA and Social Security education and information materials, food and advertising, please.
And is this what you presented to the commissioners this morning?
Um, I about the Ron Colly ad or the ad that went in the Ron Colly sports book.
And that this is for schools?
Right, these are for, this is the school grant, right, that promotes COVID and other immunization strengthening because our schools are so far behind in the childhood immunizations.
Okay, could you elaborate just a little bit more? Because I know you told the commissioners a little bit more this morning.
Right. So this is a grant that came down from the State Department of Health. It's a two-year grant. With the grant, we hired a Crisis Coag Coordinator. She's our, what we refer to her as the school liaison. We also have part-time people that support her position. She goes into the schools and basically what the State Department of Health told us to do is whatever the schools need help with, this money and that person provides them the help and services they need. So currently we are trying to catch all of our schools up on their immunizations. For the past couple of years, they normally have a cutoff date of October 1st, that if you are not immunized, you're not allowed to attend school. That hasn't been happening. Now all the schools are taking a hard line on that. So this coordinator. Now all the schools are taking a hard line on that. So this coordinator in this grant is helping um, provide those services to the schools to get them caught up. Get all their records in CHIRP, um, and anything the schools ask for, hearing and vision screenings, we're helping with those. Um, whether they need AEDs, um, or they need stop the bleed kits, all of that falls underneath this grant, per the state, the state's criteria.
Okay, thank you, Betsy.
And we will be back periodically. That's a two-year, uh, four hundred and forty thousand dollar grant each year. So it will be to the tune of about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion to approve Crisis Coag School Grant Number Eighty-two forty-six.
A motion by John T., a second by Pete. All those in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. Thank you. Statewide nine-one-one.
Pete Brandt, nine-one-one director. First one here, just an additional appropriation for, uh, in our overtime budget. Let's see, I've transferred. One hundred and nine thousand dollars over three different times. Uh, so far this year, so I've kind of. Taken as much as I possibly can from other places.
Why is uh, why is overtime so? Depleted? Do we have, do you have a bunch of open positions?
We've been about ten short most of the year, and it, with the amount of time it takes to, to train people, I mean, we're talking six months. So with that amount of time, it's, I mean, we've had, uh, since November, we've had just shy five thousand hours of overtime.
Wow.
And so going into next year and your budget process, is this, do you think you've got it handled for next year, or are you just? Hopeful that you're gonna fill those positions?
Well, we've got uh. As of Thursday, this coming Thursday, we have our, we have one starting and that will fill all of our vacancies. So go again through training. We got one that uh, is supposed to come back from military leave next month and then he'll. Restart his training, but at that point we'll be fully staffed, so as long as we can stay there, we can. Hopefully, uh, hopefully won't need this, we're, you know, in, in years past, I've been able to transfer money over and avoid where we're at right now, but.
Do you know what the um. Year-to-date, I don't have the numbers in front of me, year-to-date with the open positions, how much uh, you're ahead there to offset this cost?
Well, like I said, I've, I've already gone through those line items and of, of those people that aren't making the, the full amount or. Where we had a position that stayed open for, for a period of time while we worked to fill it, I've taken um. Quite a bit of money, a hundred and nine thousand from those different lines and transferred them into overtime at three different occasions already this year, so.
Well, I'm in favor of this, but I want, want to ask one more question. What happens if you lose more people? Who fills in those spots because it is a public safety issue? I mean, you're serving the entire county right now, so do, do other agencies come in to help at that point or what?
So we, we've been able to, you know, maintain our staffing within the room uh, throughout the year, just with this overtime.
Okay.
And then we're, we're uh, in, in the budget process this year, we've requested an increase of part-time to twenty dollars an hour to hopefully bring back some. Some uh, some part-time staff to help, help fill those gaps. Tough balance.
I'll move uh, to approve um, five D. Presented as well, the Johnson Public Safety Communications um, requests. Go from equipment, repair and maintenance to CAD field base admin, uh, nine hundred and twelve dollars, as presented, as indicated here on our agenda tonight.
Have we talked about that one? It's a wall of cherry.
We just did.
Huh?
We just did.
Worked for me.
So you could explain if you feel, if you feel. Yes, Katus on.
Cat administrators just giving, bringing his salary up to what um, our other support staff are making and.
All right, got a motion by Pete, a second by John T. All those in favor? I oppose. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Maybe did, we need to put that uh, note B in the motion. Six B, six A and B. Okay.
Okay, item seven, American Rescue Plan.
So Ron and you and I, talk about this a little bit. This is the second tranche, I think, for JC Fiber. They, they were awarded one million before. This is as approved by the ARPA committee. Uh, the professional services.
I'll speak to that.
Okay.
Hey, the professional services with uh.
Barnes and Thornburg.
Barnes and Thornburg, uh, the gentleman is gonna be with them, is hired for five thousand dollars a month for four months. Provide uh. Verification that the processes that we're using for the uh, food pantries and the um. Upcoming consideration of a million dollars for not-for-profits as being administered in a proper manner. Can I say that clearly?
Yeah, that's correct. He's also just gonna be helping with any other ARPA question that we have. Um, you've been using them kind of already when it comes to uh, the animal shelter project. We have some concerns with some heightened federal. Restrictions and regulations that we had to abide by. The look, the rules by the treasury are kind of a constant state of flux, so those have changed recently, which is good for the county. When it comes to our discretionary bucket of funds, it makes it easier for us to use those funds without having to deal with the high. Federal restrictions and different CFRs that we have to deal with. So is, what they'll do in general is to help with that grant with the food pantries, but also just. Anytime we have any kind of expenditure from ARPA um, to kind of cross-check us to make sure that we're bank compliance essentially, so.
So how much of the ARPA funds are left after all this?
Out of the roughly thirty million, um. A good majority that we still have. I can provide you guys an Excel spreadsheet. Have, if we, assuming all this gets appropriate, JC Fiber is two million, we're expecting. One to two million on the animal shelter, and we had some smaller dollars, a couple hundred thousand. I mean, we have ballpark, probably about twenty-six, twenty-five million. That are on appropriated currently, so the majority of the funds are still, are still there.
But a heavy discussion.
Yeah, what we, right now, just with the ARPA subcommittee, everything's very. In, up in the air, we're talking about it. The big expenditures right now are gonna be the mental health facility, uh, that's gonna be a big one. The Drake Road project is another large expense, so I think we're. Hoping to get. A better idea of how much the mental health facility is gonna cost, once we get the design done on that project itself, that'll give us a good idea of how. Big of an expense that project will be, um, and that'll give us a better idea of moving forward, how much we've left. Or that's a regulatory expense um, for, you know, drains in the county, we can use our money for that or whatever. Regulatory amount we can use. The discretionary bucket's the one that's more limited, we're, we only have ten million for that. A lot of our expenditures. We're, you know, are coming from that bucket so far outside of the broadband expense, so. Of the discretionary bucket, I think we have roughly eight billion left.
Well, we have a, a larger amount that we can, has not been through the process yet, but it's been.
Is it earmarked?
Earmarked.
It's just not been.
Yeah.
I guess it depends on what you're asking for, earmark or actually appropriated, it's kind of two different things.
Yeah, the earmark numbers are quite a bit different than, than appropriated. So they're still in process and, and the three members of the committee, uh, Rob and John and I, and uh. We have a committee meeting coming up on the twenty-sixth, I believe it is, our next meeting. They will tie down some more of these numbers and.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
I'll make a motion to approve item D seven. Second, motion by Ron, a second by John Ed. All those in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. Other business. Same now, old and new business. I have a motion to adjourn. Second, motion by John T., a second by John Ed. All those in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. We adjourn.